Two duck and two glass. One thing I was thinking, I don't know, but I'll say that. And it's like, well, they don't take anything else. So, you know, you're going to, you get basically a 1099 from those people. I don't know. He does, you know, I'm sure he'll be looking at us and say, well, you might have to squat me something. Like, I don't know about that.
See, now you're learning as throughout the year, you need to save some money after that.
Yeah.
I'm going to call a meeting to order. It's the April 12th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And first thing we'll do is have a pledge to our flag.
Where the flag is to the flag of the United States of America in its very right which stands on a nation, on a ground, with a visible liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone have any additions to the posted agenda? Just a guess.
I just have a statement in the public comment. I just have a statement in the public comment.
Okay. All right. That's, that's fine. Okay. And now it is time for public comments. Anyone has any comments about anything that's not in the agenda? Now would be the time to tell us about it, whatever it is. And we'll see if we need to discuss it for a while. And if it is something that you want to bring up, but it has to do with something that is in the agenda, please wait till that part of the meeting to bring it up. Are there any comments?
Comments, Chair.
Go ahead.
I, it's been 23 days since the press conference announcing the State Representative Scott Conklin on the $180,000 grant for the Patent Township Sinkhole Georgetown Townhouse owners on Amberwood Way. I would like to give an update on the Sinkhole grant of 180,000. First, the township has not received the grant funding as of yet. There are stages and guidelines and legal procedures that the township has to follow. There are also a process and procedures that are in place that the township must follow in order to receive the funding. The township will continue to update those sinkhole homeowners that they, that were affected on the progress of the funding. Thank you for your patience as we work to get the Sinkhole residents safely back in their homes. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments? Is anybody thinking about offering a comment? Seeing none, we'll go to next item, which is three. Presentations and public hearings. And there's a proposed franchise agreement from Shenandoah Cable Television. We, the board's seen updates from me on several occasions here in the last six months. We're at the point now where we're ready to take action on the agreement. Agreement was included with the agenda materials. There was also a summary of the franchise provisions. If the board has any questions, I will address those. Otherwise, I would recommend that the board open public hearing for consideration of ordinance 2023-329 Shenandoah Cable Television franchise agreement. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to talk to us about this, what they think about this, or offer any other comments? I don't see anyone in the Zoom audience. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's done. We've now had the public hearing. And so we're up to number two here, which is action consideration. And this, after the public hearing, which we just had, we need to identify any other revisions or further information that's needed before proceeding to take some action.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to, we approve the ordinance 2023-329.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, that we approve this. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then that passes unanimously. Now we're up to public safety.
All right, thank you. A copy of my March public safety report has been included with your agenda materials. You'll note that our officers stopped 152 vehicles, wrote 60 citations, five parking tickets, and handled 60 criminal arrests. So a very busy month with arrests. Under department notes, a 49-year-old male was arrested for access device fraud and theft. He used his ex-girlfriend's checking account without her permission, removed money from her account, and deposited into his own Venmo account. Eighteen-year-old male was arrested for theft and receiving stolen property. The individual observed a cordless drill, which was unattended inside a township business. The male took the drill and left the scene. He was later identified, but no longer had the drill, but he was in possession of the drill bit. He later confessed to taking the drill from the business. And a 24-year-old female was arrested for possessing crack cocaine, methamphetamine, and paraphernalia. She was riding in a vehicle that was detained by officers who were investigating a retail theft incident. The officers obtained and served a search warrant on the vehicle and recovered those illegal items. Sixteen arrests were made for retail theft. Thirty-two arrests were made for minors law. And those were all for individuals who were minors attempting to purchase alcohol with a fake ID done on our liquor store. Four arrests were made for driving under the influence of alcohol. Officers successfully served seven of the 17 warrants that they attempted to serve, and we conducted eight vacation home checks. Our officers did have to use force during two incidents in the month of March. Both of them were assisting Ferguson Township police officers. The first was a father-son domestic dispute. The son had actually assaulted his father. And as officers attempted to take him into custody, he began to resist arrest. One of our officers had to pin down the individual's arm, and another one secured his legs while the two officers from Ferguson Township handcuffed the individual. There were no injuries reported during that incident. The second was our officers assisting Ferguson Township on a protection from abuse violation arrest. Male who was already handcuffed was refusing to get into the Ferguson Township Police Department cruiser. So our officer went to the other side and helped by his shoulder kind of pull him into the vehicle as a Ferguson officer guided him from the outside. And again, no injuries were reported. Under community relations, our officers conducted multiple walkthroughs at the Center Indoor Sports Complex for various basketball tournaments that were held here throughout the month. They also visited many of the local hotels because our hotels saw a very increased activity from, from those events as well. Officer Tuskovich spoke with the sixth-grade academic literacy class at Park Forest Middle School about how police evaluate evidence. And then Officer Tuskovich and Detective Federenko spoke to the eighth-grade Park Forest Middle School students just about their jobs and about law enforcement in general for law today. Training and department activities. Our officers attended tactical response team training. Officer Bardzel attended a traffic safety conference. Officer McCaslin attended a report writing training. Officer Snyder attended a training on an implementation program for canines. Sergeant Albright attended the annual accreditation conference. And Officer Sudden attended a child safety seat technician update training. All of our officers completed their required nearly low-light weapons qualification. And I attended a planning meeting for the 2023 Center County Law Enforcement Memorial Service. I'm always proud to represent our agency at that service. This year it will be May 17. It's open to the public, so anybody's encouraged to come that would be interested. At the Belfont Courthouse on the steps in the front of the courthouse at noon, again on May 17th. That's a Wednesday. I attended a humane officer meeting and an after-action review of an incident that happened at the Belfont High School. On March 29th, if you're not aware, they received a call for an active shooter. It turned out it was what they're considering to be a swatting incident where there was a very large police response. The students at Belfont High and the faculty, staff did a fantastic job. We highly commended for the way they behaved and conducted themselves. Again, it was a very major police response to this incident. Myself and one of our officers went down to assist any way we could. And it was just really, again, great to see the mutual aid that we have with all the agencies. There was agencies, there was actually people from Pittsburgh that heard that it was happening and showed up from the Attorney General's office. So it was really impressive to see that we did a nice after-action review and identified some gaps and some barriers that we need to work on. So it was, it was good for us to be able to identify those things to hopefully fix for any future incidents. I attended the Center County Chiefs meeting and also the community and campus immunity meeting. Few photographs and some recognitions. So on the left, if I keep saying their names, maybe you've never seen them before. On the left in the photograph is Officer Bradley Tuskovich. He is our school resource officer and community relations officer. On the right is Officer Central Suhu, one of our daylight officers. They both were recognized by Center Life Link on March 24th. And we've talked about the incident a few times here at the beginning of the year, but they received the EMS Citizenship Award for their successful CPR and saving a life. So it was really nice recognition at their annual banquet back on March 24th. Received a very nice letter regarding that incident at Belfont. It was at the high school, but there was kind of a trickle-down effect that affected the middle school as well. So the principal of the middle school and the vice principal sent a very nice letter to all the law enforcement and first responders who were there helping out that day. And then lastly, Officer Schaefer received a very nice letter from a parent of a, I believe it was a Penn State student that he had dealt with, just for the way his care and compassion in dealing with the individual. A very nice letter that the adult, the parent had sent in. And lastly, we have a record list for calls. Again, a very busy month in March. We handled 527 calls. That's up from the 458 we handled in February. Seventy-one traffic, that was the most common call for service, followed by 68 school checks and 51 EMS assists. That completes my report, and I just have a brief, a few comments on our hiring process, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the report before you go there.
Anyone have any questions, comments?
Chief, do you have an idea why the spike in our numbers this month?
So some of it can be contributed, again, to the Wine and Spirits Store. You know, we're seeing a lot of activity there. So I think there was some training done with some of the staff there. So our officers are heading down there quite frequently. Again, our officers are being very proactive with school checks as well. So we're hitting the schools quite frequently. And then the traffic numbers are up a little bit this month as well.
Thank you.
Any other? It's always good to see a long list of accolades in that, how the report is this.
Agreed.
Okay, we'll move along then. We're up to item five. Here's.
Chief Ken.
Chief again.
Real quickly, if I can, I'm sorry.
Tyler wants to follow up on hiring process.
Yeah, just want to, no worries. So, yeah, I just want to let.
That's exactly what you said you were going to do.
Yeah, so here we are. Right. So our agency currently is accepting applications for the position of police officer to test, to take the written test. We began accepting applications on Monday, April 3rd, and we will be closing the application process on Friday, May 12th. We are anticipating hiring at least two new officers during this testing cycle. And I wanted to just give you a little bit of information, just so you kind of know about the process and what we expect to happen here. So the first step in our testing process is a written exam that will be held on Saturday, May 20th. Lucky to have the Park Forest Middle School allow us to use their auditorium area for the testing. But the candidates with the top 20 written exam scores will be invited to participate in an oral interview. And then the candidates passing both the written and the oral exam with an 80% or above on both will be entered into an eligibility pool. When necessary, Patent Township will make a conditional offer of employment to an applicant from that eligibility pool based on the needs from our, of our agency. And then following the acceptance of the conditional offer by a candidate, a background investigation, physical fitness exam, psychological exam, and a medical and physical exam will occur. And then finally, upon completion of all of that, it's a rather extensive process, but an official offer of employment will be made via the Board of Supervisors to a candidate, again, based on the needs of the police department. But I've been trying to spread the word as much as possible. So anybody watching, please let your, your networks of folks know that we are, we are accepting applications. We've been, we're trying to recruit at the police academies, colleges that offer some criminal justice programs. PHS, the police website, indeed.com. But we also have information up on our website, our social media sites. We have a, about a 17-page guide that I put together. It talks about our community, talks about our agency, talks about the position, and then also the testing process. And most importantly is the application for you to be able to take the tests is included in that packet as well. So that's found on our website. You can always call us, email us with any questions that you have. But we're just trying to get, again, get the word out to as many people. So we have a really nice turnout for the written exam and hopefully have a really good pool of candidates to choose from.
Chief, from the list that we had before, didn't we have a few female officers that may we make him, you know, get that word out to them again?
Yeah, so the list that we had, so our lists are good for two years. So it expires after two years. And ours expired in May of last year, and we just haven't had a need to test.
We can reach out to those folks and just let them know another round hiring is open, yeah?
Yep. We'll go back to the individuals that were on our list from before and invite them back. I will say typically, the top candidates unfortunately get taken pretty quickly. So I will be happy to reach out, but I wouldn't be surprised to find they, they haven't found employment elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, at the last, the last time we had candidates and you reviewed them, we, the board asked you about the composition of the interview, interview committee.
Yes.
And to get more diversity on it, have you formulated who the new interview committee will be?
We, we have not made the selections yet for that, but that will, that is definitely a consideration going into that process that, that will be accounted for. We have not made that decision yet. Don't anticipate, with the written test being May 20th, the oral interviews will probably be somewhere in the area of mid-June, I would imagine. So we have a little bit of time for that.
Thank you.
I apologize for jumping in so quickly. Well, it happens at this meeting sometimes. It reminded me of when somebody told me that they found a way to stop the aging process, to slow it down. And that is to force it to work its way through Congress. But that's not a problem here. Now we're up to five, which is Public Works Operations, Public Works Operations. And a very important thing, this week is Work Zone Awareness Week. It's coming up 17th to 21st.
Correct. National Work Zone Awareness Week. It starts off on Monday. You'll see a lot more of this around, which is class two attire here in Patent Township that we wear. Mostly what we want to make sure folks realize is, slow down, give us time. We will get you through, but it might take a couple minutes. Because the statistics show from 1982 to 2020, every year we have an average of 776 individuals that lose their lives in a work zone. And unfortunately, those, that's just the average for that long time period. Those numbers are actually higher the closer we get to today's date. So that's really our biggest plea is just to make sure folks recognize and realize we're going to be out there a lot more on the roads today. And ask them to please give us time to be able to do the work we need and do it safely.
I'm glad that we follow the, the rules and guidelines in the township for identifying the work zones. I see some places around here, suddenly you'll come upon a place where the traffic is stopped and you have no idea, and there's no warning and, or anything like that. And I don't see that here.
Yes, we, we just had a class that was here on the 11th. It was through the LTAP. And five of Patent Township's individuals went through it. It was temporary traffic control, which there is a standard for that traffic control that needs to be in place for a work zone. There's going to be another temporary traffic control that's going to be held at the burrows. So some more of our individuals are going to be going there later on in the year. We try to make sure all the individuals on the road crew all have certification in temporary traffic control.
And I guess all that money that came out of during COVID to bring the country back and to do all the infrastructure, I mean, that's what's being built now. And that's also adding to the number of these that occur, whether they're local or national.
Ken, go Orange Day. Can you talk about a little bit about that?
I mean, in, like I said, orange, we kind of prefer the yellow.
Okay.
These are from the national organizations.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Got you. Thank you.
Ken, just to follow up on, I want to compliment the road crews for the times I've interacted and come upon a road crew working where there was a traffic control, flaggers, you know, directing single lane. Meeks Lane, when they were doing all the brush trimming on the sides of Meeks Lane, that's where I lived. And they were working on Grayes Woods Boulevard at one time on this. I've always observed very professional behavior on the part of your flaggers. And I also observed, at least the few times I was there, the vehicle drivers were also very attentive and patient and waited their turn. And there was, I did not observe any problems. Of course, that was just a very short period of time. I don't know over the whole day's worth of your road crews work, whether they experienced that courtesy from, from the vehicle drivers. But I do want to make sure you, you're aware that the times I've watched your road crew, flaggers work, they've done it very well.
Thank you.
Good work, Ken. No board action is required on this particular item. And now we're up to six, Engineering, Planning, and Zoning Planning Commission's report.
We've got Jim Payne on Zoom with us. Go ahead, Jim.
Good evening. Short report. We only had one action item on the agenda. And that was Acres Artisans' request for a temporary use permit for a farmer's market out by Nittany Sports Complex. Their presentation packet, which you'll see shortly, was well done. They already have a lease agreement with the complex for the area of the parking lot they want to use. And that's about it. We approved it to send it to you. That's all.
Thank you, Jim.
Welcome.
Okay, and then for this item, we need to review the information that's included, if we haven't already done that. We got the introduction, and then solicit additional comments or ask for other information and ask for public input. So does anyone have anything else to add to our, our discussion of this? Good, good planning.
Jim always, I mean, whoever the planning commission rep always takes my thunder, so that's okay. They do, they do part of the work. So Acres Artisan Farmer's Market submitted a request for a temporary use permit. And as mentioned, it was approved by the planning commission. It's for a weekly outdoor farmer's market at 177 Champion Drive, the upper parking lot of the Nittany Valley Sports Center. It's proposed to be open every Monday from 3:00 to 7:00, April through November. Included in your agenda packet is a location map, the application documents, and the sketch plan that shows the 23 vendor spaces. There's a lot of detail that is on that sketch plan. With us this evening is a representative from Acres Artisans, if you have any further questions.
Any questions or comments? Seems like everything is pretty straightforward. So we need to.
We need a motion.
We need a motion to approval. It's been planned.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, excellent. Now we're up to follow up on Valley Vista Park concerns, which. Now we're up to follow up on Valley Vista Park concerns, which we talked about last summer and previous times, and involves the the top lot, the small park that's there.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So at our last board meeting, a resident was here to discuss her concerns about the Valley Vista Park and about the Gainer Parklet. Ms. Susan Wheeler prepared a memo for inclusion in the board agenda discussing the three points that were made at the last meeting. So this memo is to update you on the status. A survey was developed and sent to the Valley Vista Park neighborhood. It went out to 278 addresses with a URL link to a survey, and responses are being accepted until April 28th, so by the end of the month. And then the data will be summarized and presented to the RAC at their June 18th meeting. The second point was about encroachments to the Gainer Drive Parklet. All encroachments identified last year have been removed. That was verified by Susan Wheeler and by Nicole Hardar, our zoning officer. The third point was regarding the walkways at the rear reach property. A letter was mailed last September reminding residents of their responsibility to maintain the walkways located to the rear reach property. Recent film inspection by Susan and Nicole showed that there were 20 properties that still should have a higher level of maintenance on their walkways, and a second letter was mailed to them on April 4th. This item is information only, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, so, since it was just information and nobody's suggesting we do anything additional at the moment, but 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 the public comment period is still open, and so we want to encourage people to respond, so that's the only way we know how how people feel about this.
Yes.
And we appreciate all the responses we get.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we're up to D, contract award for the Burnell Park Road Phases 2A and 2B.
Yeah, I'm going to take this one. The engineering, planning, zoning, solicited bids for this project, which is the second phase of the Burnell Road Park. We have received grants for from DCNR and from National Fitness Campaign to help fund this work. Four bids were received. A little responsive bidder was from John Clare Excavating Woodward for a total of That was for two base bids and one deduct alternate. The we're recommending award for this award, awarding the project to John Clare Excavating as norm as noted, but want to make the board aware that the entire budget, budget, project budget, excuse me, is is over budget by $81,000. If you go to the second page of attachment 6D, notice there are several other items beyond the 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 construction work that township is also going to buy, spend money on, the Fit Court equipment. We've actually already paid for that, but in terms of the budget, we're still over budget. So the John Clare work, Fit Court, benches and trash receptacles, bicycle repair stations, solar powered charging stations for phones, all that together all adds up to $886,000, which is about $81,000 over over budget. To proceed with this project, I'm recommending that we reali- reallocate funds from the Scotia Connector Bike Way project. We had $120-some thousand slated to that, and we'll talk more about that a little further into the agenda, but we need to also make you aware that we're proceeding down that road to get this project going this year. If approved and awarded, then the contract is expected to be finished up by October of this year. If there's any questions, I will ask, or if there are detailed questions, I think Susan Wheeler's on on with us, and she can talk about some of the details about the parks if you have any questions regarding that.
Has anyone suggested any part of the thing that we were considering tonight as doing less or fewer of to bring it within?
Yeah, that was my first, that was my first question to Susan. No, there's two main items that are going in with this. One is is the pump track that's, and Susan can give me details. One is, like I said, the pump track is one of the major items, and you can't break that up. And then the other item, one of the other major items is is Fit Court. That's all a package deal that goes together. So we looked at that, and unfortunately, we just don't have, we got to provide the parking lot and the walkways. So it's, we've been pared down as much as we can. Again, I'd be ashamed to to not get going this year, but we think we we're going to be, in in terms of the money that we're taking off the Scotia Connector Bike Way, those were design monies that we think we'll have to replace for next year, but for the Scotia Bike Way, we'll probably be involved in right-of-way acquisition for probably good part of the rest of this year.
Follow up on that, the the your recommendation is to include the deduct alternates, in other words, dropping out the landscaping. So what's the plan for reinstating the landscaping dollars?
We do have a source to get trees that we've used in the past, I think, three years. We get trees through the Pennsylvania Bureau of Forestry. Susan, you might want to unmute and and add in. So Susan's going to get some of those trees, and we will plant those trees in lieu of what the package that was on here, and I don't know if there's more that we might end up doing next year then. None of the landscaping was required by the the land development plan. It's all landscaping that we wanted to add for the enjoyment of the visitors. Is that correct, Susan?
That's right, and actually Chuck Stradossi is also zooming, and he's our design professional from YSM, but we, the majority of those would be planted trees, and as you're aware, we've actually received 80 trees over the last two and a half years from the Tree Pennsylvania Grant Program, and so we receive those trees trees for free in our matches to have our road crew do the planting. So we are going to plan to put trees in from that grant program this fall and again next spring, and probably, in fact, we'll end up with more trees being placed than the original land development plan showed. So we're going to manage the plantings of the trees and the landscaping in that manner.
Yeah, if you notice out along the Circleville Bike Way, you see new trees pop up there. So those are, those are some of the grant trees we've gotten through that grant program and.
Yeah, where we've put them is along the Circleville Road bicycle path. We've done two separate plantings there. We have a planting that's gone in between the disc golf course and Circleville Park and also the disc golf course at Burnell Road Park. Just today, Glenn Coakley from our road crew and I went out and staked out locations for new additional trees at Burnell Road Park that we're going to be receiving from the grant program next week for planting. So it's a program that actually takes applications in spring and fall, and we've been successful every time that we've made applications, so I see no reason that that would change. We can actually apply for 20 trees at any given time, and in the past, we've only applied for between 12 and 15, so we can look for 20 this fall and 20 next spring.
Thanks, Susan.
You're welcome.
That's good. I know our beach on appreciates the arrival of any new trees.
So we would need a motion from the board to warn the, or the contract is recommended.
Is there such a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
It's been seconded. Any other discussion, comments, fears, worries, consternation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's done, let's do that. And so that brings us to.
Do we need to vote on for the over budget?
No, no, we just need to make, we don't need to do a formal budget amendment or anything. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that, that we were shuffling monies around.
Okay.
Okay, now I lost myself here. We're, that was the right.
Page eight now, 6E.
Which is Valley Vista Drive Shared Use Path, Bike Way to extent and an extension and in the Park Forest neighborhood, so, right? Okay.
Some of this was for Betsy Whitman's.
Yeah, this was for Betsy, and she's not there.
She had made a specific request to look at Sandy Ridge Road for connection, so we may end up, we'll touch base with Betsy next, tomorrow or next week, and if needed, we may bring this back at the next meeting, but for now, we'll go ahead with it, so.
Okay. So last year, we engaged McCormick Taylor, and we have Rob Watts here this evening, our traffic engineering consultant, to look at extending connections from Valley Vista, shared use path into Park Forest at two additional locations. The first one was to the cul-de-sac at the end of Douglas Drive, and the second one was near the Sandy Ridge Road intersection. So Rob prepared this graphic showing the existing crossings in yellow, the proposed crossing at Douglas Drive, the recommendation in green, and the Sandy Ridge Road as not recommended. The reason Sandy Ridge is not recommended is because there is inadequate site distance in both directions when exiting the church. As you can see in this graphic, if you look towards the right, back towards our office, say, the required site distance is 390 feet, and the measured site distance was only 275 feet. Off towards the left, though, I think it is adequate there. 370 was required and 425 was measured. And he also included these photographs, so you could see visually what they look like. This is off to the looking right, and then this is looking left. This item is for information only, but we wanted to bring this to you and look at authorizing McCormick Taylor to move forward with surveying and conceptual design to establish a preferred location for the path to Douglas Drive cul-de-sac. And as I stated, Rob is here from McCormick Taylor if you have any specific questions about his memorandum.
For you, one thing about Doug, I don't have the argument with with what your decision is, but at Douglas Drive, I don't think the prevailing speed of the car, since it's at the bottom of the hill there, is the same as it, it may be within legal bounds or it may not be, but I don't think it's 35 miles an hour at the bottom of the hill there.
So the 85th percentile speed that was measured was, what, 46 miles an hour?
Yeah, the township put out the speed cameras on the signs that record speed and also give feedback on speed. We pulled those, the speed from that that camera, I think it was April 2022.
A year ago.
So we tried to do it, you know, during a typical day around here, you know, Penn State session, schools in session and whatnot. Do you, I don't recall the exact location of that camera. It was probably in the middle of the corridor that we studied, but probably not right at Douglas Drive.
It's near the church.
It was near the church.
So near the Sandy Ridge.
There's good site distance down there at the bottom. The key is having enough site distance in either direction, so when you're crossing, you know that it's safe to cross, or you should make a mistake and not cross, that the driver has enough time to see you and come to a full complete stop before you get to the crosswalk.
And the proposed location at Douglas Drive, where we would cross them, had had surplus site distance till it was all said and done, even considering the speed that was measured in the field, the 45 or 40 miles an hour.
46.
46 miles an hour, there we go.
Yeah, the problem with Sandy Ridge is the top of the hill.
Right.
And where the crown of the hill is, you can't see over, you can't see a car coming or or a driver can't see somebody, potentially wouldn't be able to see somebody in the crosswalk in time, so. So we don't want to create, we don't want to create crosswalks where we're going to create safety issues, so.
Is it necessary to survey any of the residents on Douglas at that area about their thoughts about this?
Well, we'll have to, no, we didn't do, we haven't done any surveying of residents. We will have to go, there's, there is a strip of private property between the Valley Vista right-of-way and the end of the Douglas Drive right-of-way, so we will have to deal with probably one of the residents there to get an easement, but we'll need to do the survey. We'll need to identify the best location for that path and then have McCormick Taylor and their new installed shaper to do some survey, put together a preliminary plan so that we know how much right, where the right-of-way is that we're needed or the easement, and can approach them.
Reason I ask that is that I know when it was built, there was some thought of actually having a road come right out onto Valley Vista there instead of the cul-de-sac, and...
Yeah, one day, many, 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 many years.
It was many, many years ago, but but the result of of turning that down was making it into a no-access road.
Yeah.
And so, like, you couldn't even have the school buses discharge kids along that because you couldn't, you couldn't have a stop there, so.
There's a dirt trail there showing people use that.
Oh, yeah, of course. Oh, it's just like on campus, just.
Only since we added the bike path, it's probably getting more use.
There's a straight line to go someplace instead of the path that's that's made for us, we'll we'll use it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're proceeding with this, right?
Yeah, the the amount for the contract is within what the authority that I have, so we'll, I'll authorize McCormick Taylor to move forward as they've recommended.
I didn't give you a chance to say anything about it.
But I just find with me.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, then we'll proceed. And I guess we're up to the Scotia Connector, right?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll take this one too, just to give you, give you an update. You haven't seen anything on this since back in August. At that point, the consultant for the project, the Wilson Group, had proposed the three alternates for making that connection from the end of the Circleville Bike Way over to the Bike Way. That's along Gracewood Boulevard. The board at that point chose alternate two, which is the one that was recommended by the Recreation Advisory Committee also. We did then ask the Wilson Consulting Group to put together, again, a preliminary layout and identify needed rights-of-ways and easements that would be needed to to make that connection. That work is shown on, if you go to the next 6F point two. There's a series of drawings there, one that shows the overall layout. It's kind of hard to see all the detail, and then there's some blowups, so we'll be approaching folk, not the township, but we're going to engage a right-of-way acquisition consultant. In this case, it's Allrose LLC of Pittsburgh and Altoona. We did go out and solicit bids from three consultants. They were, they were quite spread on the bids. Allrose was quite by, by, was low, low quote by quite a bit. All three firms were qualified to do the work. So if if everybody's okay with moving ahead with this, we will act, we will authorize them to move forward. They will make contact through mail with these property owners and then follow up with them explaining, you know, what are the needs of the township? Some of it we need is right-of-way, we'll be buying, some of it we just need construction easements where we'll be laying slope, we'll be cutting slopes back in. But Allrose, like I said, they'll make contact with folks, they'll talk to them. Ultimately, they're asking, they're trying to get a sense from these residences, are they willing to deal amicably with the township, or are they going to be resistant to this sort of thing? Once Allrose knows those questions or has a sense of those, we'll be back to the board and let you know where we're at and give you options for moving forward at that point.
Okay.
How's that?
Do we need any motions or anything?
No, at this point, again, the the amount of the contract is a little over 10,000. I can authorize that under my authority. Just wanted to give you an update, let you know, we're going to start on this process of talking to people about, you know, gaining that, you know, getting right-of-way from them, you know, that's always a question of, in the past, we've generally been fairly successful, people are willing to deal with us, but if we find one or two people who aren't, then we have to consider our options at that point, right?
Yeah. I have a...
I have a, just a question to try to understand the drawings that Alex or Susan can answer. On these individual drawings, you have a light green shaded area around the dark green area. What's the light green shaded area? What does that represent?
That's the area that's currently wooded, forested.
Wooded.
Yes.
But it has no, okay, no, really no impact. The real impact is.
The dark green, then, is the area that we need to do earthwork in.
Yeah, the dark green area and the rectangle is the portion of a lot that you need.
Yeah, yeah. Some of it, the part with just the single slash, we'll just need easements, what we call construction easements, to go in there and lay that slope back. We don't, it's just a temporary easement. And then the part that has the slashing in two directions, that's, that's the part that we'll have to obtain as right, new right-of-way from them. So, that would involve the transfer from the property owners to the township.
Okay, thank you. If and when that road is ever upgraded to four lanes as originally built, that land already is in the township right-of-way, right?
Yeah, we don't, at this point, the last time we took a hard look at Grayswoods Boulevard, we never thought we were going to need four lanes.
Right.
Based on, and especially with us buying, you know, the 140 acres of that development as part of our open space. So, at one point, there was, I don't know.
Can you put up this drawing again?
I will just get my pointer on.
It's this one?
No.
The first one in here.
Yeah, go to the first page of that.
Yeah.
See, we're all. So, as part of the Grayswoods master plan, there is a right-of-way that was laid out in here that would run, eventually, because at some point, the township thought we would have to bring Circleville Road through here and make a, make a new intersection here based on traffic conditions and maybe signalize this intersection. We did take a look at this. We don't think there's going to be any, any foreseeable need to do that. And there's a trigger based on the amount of homes that get built in, in, you know, off the end of exist or Grayswoods Boulevard ends. And I don't remember the numbers. I did, I did an analysis a while back, just to see if, you know, if we needed to reserve room for that roadway in here instead of putting the Bike Way right in the middle of it. What it came, what it looked like was, we probably wouldn't, there's no need to put a road in here for at least, I can't remember, at least 20 some years. So, at this point, there's, it'd be a little bit cost foolish to try to accommodate it now. And we don't know for sure, you know, based on traffic conditions and travel habits and things, maybe quite different in 20 years than they are now, that we may never really need this road in here. But if we do, then the people 20 years from now can deal with moving that Bike Way one way or the other. We have, you know, we do have that information. We want to make people, we want to make sure people are aware that, yes, a road could go in there someday, but we don't think it's for at least 20 years at this point. And we want to take advantage of the right-of-way that's there using for the Bike Way. But we still do need some right, we do need some more right-of-way then off of these residential properties up in this area.
When you talk about different types of transportation needs, I think about electric cars and pedestrians. And if a pedestrian isn't paying attention, they will never see an electric car coming because you don't hear it because they're quiet.
Well, if you notice, the new electric cars, when they're under a certain speed, they do make noise. There's, there's an artificial noise that's built into most of them now. I think when they're traveling under like 15 miles an hour. My wife's hybrid makes some beautiful music when it's back in the garage.
Well, it's a good thing, man.
Yeah. So, again, we don't need any action from the board. We want to make sure you're aware of what's going on. If you get approached by any residents, you know, you can say you understand this is going on and refer them back to Alexandra, who will probably refer them back to Allrose at this point. We use these right-of-way acquisition consultants because we want to be compliant. We may use the value of the right-of-way that we buy as match for a grant sometime down, down the road. So, we need to follow a particular process that PennDOT has laid out. So, that's why we use these, we use this third-party consultant, make sure they, they understand the process. They know what they can say and can't say, and they document everything they do. So.
Good.
So, you know, nobody's going to make any untoward promises or anything like that. And these, these consultants, primarily, they work for PennDOT quite a bit. So, they're, they're very familiar with this process. And it's, it's the best way for us to do it because we don't, staff doesn't have, doesn't have the knowledge to do it correctly. And it gets, parts of it can be a little bit arcane at some times. So.
With that, then we can move on to, I have 7A.
7A is PSAT's conference.
And. You want me to take that?
Sure.
Sure, if you'd like.
Yeah, I've been designated as the voting member from this township to PSAT. So, there are really two things on, to be voted on. The first was bylaw change to increase dues by 3%. The last dues increase by PSATs was nine years ago. And our, based on our population, our dues would increase, annual dues would increase from $2,013 to $2,073, a $60 increase. May I ask my finance director, would a $60 dues increase create a financial hardship for our township?
I figure it would, yes. It would not create a hardship. We could, we could absorb that.
Thank you. So, do any supervisors wish me to contest this dues increase?
Not I.
Okay, so, we're all right with that. Now, on the resolutions, I hope you had a chance to review them. Doug brought up one. Which one was it, Doug? Yeah, 23-38 is urging Department of Transportation authorize use of single yellow lines on local roads and supply for riders, even though resolutions committee supports that. Doug, we were saying that single yellow line is not even a.
Not a.
An accepted Department of Transportation.
Yeah, there's a national set of standards for traffic control called the manual uniform traffic control devices, and does not authorize the use of a single yellow line, the center line. So, that's, that's our objection.
Okay, so with the board's permission, I would oppose this resolution.
Okay.
Okay, let me look at a couple of things. I.
Doug, you seen the national for.
Yeah.
The yellow line, okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's national standards that we all have to follow to make, make sure that, as long as we follow those national standards with the signage and markings and everything, then we've done what we need to do to protect ourselves from increased liability. So.
Thank you.
If we don't do those things, then we open ourselves up for, to an Edgar Snyder moment.
And we cannot absorb that.
Right, Betsy?
Next one, Betsy brought up 23-08 on page two. And this was the resolution to seek legislation to amend the Pennsylvania prevailing wage law to exclude projects where a non-public body is paying the project cost. Betsy wanted us to oppose this because she felt prevailing wage law should be applicable across the board. So, what is the board, how do you feel about that?
I probably agree with her, but is there any reason not to agree with her?
I think, in the intent of this is to reduce the cost to townships of certain projects so they could pay a lower wage than the prevailing wage.
Yeah, I, yeah, if, if a non-public body wants to contract with a contractor, they don't need to pay prevailing wage. So, I'm a little at a bit of loss where somebody would want to run money through municipality. But maybe that's, that's a habit somewhere else. You know, prevailing wage generally does, because of the way the prevailing wage law is set up in Pennsylvania, what is, what by law is called prevailing wage for center county is generally probably higher than what the real actual prevailing wage is for center county. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, there is, you know, so typically, public projects cost more than private projects. But, you know, in this case, it's for a specific place where I guess somebody's, some non-public body is running the money through municipality to do a project, and they want to be excluded at that point. So, it seems like a kind of a, I think the workaround would be better to the non-public body just to do the contracting on their own.
Right. I think that's right.
Which is, I mean, if we were in such a situation with a developer, we'd recommend that the developer contract with somebody instead of running the money through us.
Yeah.
Because it can be a 20% or more difference in, in the cost of a project.
Presumably, the workers will get that 20% more in their wages.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, some, some contractors in this area who predominantly do PennDOT work will generally, their wages will be in line with prevailing wage. The smaller contracts in, in the area, smaller contractors in central Pennsylvania will probably be paying less than what's, you know, what's by law prevailing wage. So, those contractors probably, they will pay their, you know, like John Clare excavating. When he's doing the Burnell Road project, he'll be paying prevailing wage for that. But when his guy's moved to a private project, they'll probably be paying, you know, beer or something less.
What's your desire? Along with Betsy's?
I think it's Betsy's.
Okay, so I will oppose this.
You will oppose it, then. Does anyone else want to chime in on this?
Let me check and see if I have anything else. I have two that I was going to ask about. Doug, 23-33 and 23-34 on page seven. These are two resolutions that submitted by Bucks County, but the Resolutions Committee opposed. The first one seeks legislation to require for-profit privately operated water and sewer utility companies to comply with the same mandates as municipally owned systems not operating for public, for profit regarding capital plans, environmental compliance, and similar such mandates. And the reason for these resolutions, many to oppose this is that they, that this was not addressing a township issue.
Well, it's not directly related to township, second-class township governance. You know, there are very few second-class townships that operate water and sewer systems. So, I think there, I think, I'm guessing a little bit, but they're, you know, thinking it's more of an authority issue, yeah.
We personally, Pat Township has no reason to support this kind of issue.
Yeah, on our lane.
Okay. And the next one was seeking legislation to require that municipality certified municipal authority approve the sale of authorities' assets to private entity. And again.
Yeah, yeah, authorities are typically, well, yeah, municipal, yeah, yeah. Authorities are fairly independent under the Municipalities Authorities Act. You know, if, if it was the ABC Township's Water Authority, maybe they have some seek in it. But if it's the ABC Township Authority that's providing service to XYZ Township, then XYZ Township Governance really has no say about the operation of that. You know, their, their, folks are serving the residents. They're not really serving the township government. So.
So, again, Pat Township has no reason to support that kind of resolution?
No, I think it's a little bit of overreach.
Okay. All right, I don't have anything else. Does anybody else mind the resolution? One, there's a question.
No.
Okay, so I will proceed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we're up to, sorry.
17.
So, it's a PML Annual Conference, October 5th to 8th, right?
Right, in Bethlehem. If you're thinking of going, as we tell you, I think every year, if you're thinking of going, let's get reservations made now so we don't run out. It's easier to cancel than it is to make reservations at the last minute. So, I think, what I'll do is, since we, since Tutan and Betsy aren't here, I'll, I'll send out emails tomorrow and see if you're interested in going. And then we'll have Lawana make reservations here in the next couple of weeks. Is that weekend a home football weekend for us?
Larry, is that a home football weekend?
No, actually, it's an off weekend. Penn State does not play on that weekend. So.
The expert has timed it?
Yes.
I obviously check to make sure before I say whether I'm going or not.
I hear you. So, we're using, yes, is fine.
Pardon?
We're using, yes, it is fine.
Yep, I'll reach out by email and let us know. And like I said, we'll go ahead and make the reservations. And like I said, if, then if something should happen, you need to change your plans later on. Very easy to cancel.
All right. It brings us to C, a review of special projects from the Capitol, from the CIP. These, these projects came about when we were talking about during COVID, and I can't remember if these came up in late 2021 or 2020, early 2022. But they've been hanging around for a while. We did include them in the Capitol Improvement Plan for this year, and then they did end up in the budget. We've been waiting to expend these funds until we've gotten, until we received a good bit of our real estate tax payments. So, they're, they, those tax bills went out beginning of March, and we've been getting, getting payments in. And Larry says we can spend money now. So.
Yeah, not too fast.
So, there was, there was a set of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven projects that had been forwarded primarily contributions to local nonprofits, several linked to affordable slash attainable housing and things like that, and a couple other to cog agencies. We just wanted to check before we made those to see if all those are still needed, or if there's something else you want to talk about or discuss.
Any comments?
We had approved these a couple of years ago, basically, so.
And we, we did have money in there for COG Fire, for their handheld sensor, which they, they got out.
That's the only one that I have question of because, you know, they're using other funds for that, that they get from.
We can remove, we can remove the designation for the use of the funds, but I still.
But still give it to the fire.
Yeah, I put that in, and I would still support giving them some of the ARP money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with you.
And then we'll go ahead and then.
Agree?
We'll get those, we'll get those checks out in the next couple of weeks. Yeah. So we're keeping all of those then?
Yep.
Okay. Which brings us to D, Managers' Annual Energy Efficiency Update.
It does, March of, or usually March, but it's April this year. We started this back in 2011, last time there was initiative at Council of Governments to look at greenhouse gas emissions. We've done several, quite a few initiatives that we've undertaken since then. Each year, I go through the list and update it, note it there at the bottom of page 11, things we've done, participating in solar power purchase effort, 2023, last year, we reached an agreement with Spin to place e-bikes in the township. Sometime in the last two or three years, I didn't nail down the exact year, but we've gotten bicycle-friendly business recognition from the American Bicycle League, both for Patton Township and the Center Region. And then we are upping our game on maintenance of bikeways. And Ken told me that we've got a build date now for, we've got a very specific piece of equipment from Bobcats called a Toolcat that we'll use for about summer and winter maintenance of bikeways. So it's, be better than what we've been using, but there's a variety of things we've tried in the past to clear plow and salt bikeways. So I think Ken, the, the road crew will appreciate that new piece of equipment. Hopefully, it'll be here by wintertime. With that, if there's any questions, I'll, I'll put a stab in, and then you all can decide what to do with the next manager.
Any other, any questions? Sounds like we're on the right track. Then Consent Agenda.
I've got five items on Consent Agenda. Notice was there on Tony hearing board decision minutes about to report cooperation agreement for the top threes RACP grant and appeal, tax assessment, appeal agreement with Northwest Savings Bank. I asked that the board approve Consent Agenda, agenda S.
Is there a motion?
A motion.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any comments, questions? All favor?
Aye.
Posed? That passes. Now we come to an exciting portion of the meeting. The Managers' Report.
Managers' Report. So I, first Larry has a request. Next, at the next meeting, we will have the audited financial statements available for review. Did the board want to have Larry provide that presentation on that, or do we want to bring our auditors in via Zoom and give you a presentation? We've done it both ways in the last few years.
No offense, Larry, but we're, we're paying the auditors.
Yes.
So they ought to make an appearance and make their presentation.
Okay. Do you mind if they make that appearance by Zoom as opposed to?
Zoom is fine with me.
I would, I had already let them know that we would probably, would like them to appear by Zoom, but I just wanted to verify it before we finalize the schedule.
So we're doing.
And no offense, it's taken.
We'll tell them to give the exciting version.
Yeah, give the exciting version.
We're doing what we're supposed to do.
And then after you've heard it, just imagine what the non-exciting version was like.
Doing everything that was as quickly possible.
I have the draft that was sent to me this morning.
Were there any findings?
No findings. It is what's called a clean opinion, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I am going through the, as you know, it's a, it's a rather lengthy document. So I'm going through the draft, and I have just a couple formatting comments to give them. And then it will go through their final review, and it should be done well in, in advance of the next meeting.
Okay, great.
So I was also going to for the next meeting, I know COG Finance is going to look at the first version of the COG CIP.
Right.
And I think they want it, they want our comments back by the day after the first meeting in May. So I was going to bring that CIP to the board meeting on the 26th, so we have a preliminary look at it. And then if people have detailed questions, we can try and get answers before we look at it again on May 10th.
Okay.
And then return comments on May 11th. So. The Managers' Report, I'll go through. We had the development update from the zoning officer. We'll provide questions or answers if you have questions. She did provide some photos in this one, which I thought was a good addition. You've probably heard, we've had a change in leadership at CADA. Ms. Oliva has moved on to a consultant. And the CADA Board has engaged David Rischel, who's a consultant, to be an interim executive director. And they've also brought Hugh Moes and Eric Bernier back as, as consultants for, to work through this interim period while they're out doing a search for a new executive director. So I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Rischel this morning, and, and Hugh was there also. And I think CADA is in good hands for the time being. There was an update from DEP, Ms. Cheryl Sinclair on the PFA issue up by the airport in Venter Township. We had a letter from Penn State about permitting for stormwater out on the airport property. And then there was a correspondence from Pennsylvania DEP noting that UAJ has, their annual chapter 94 report has been approved. In terms of announcements, just to let you know that the recodification project is still moving forward. We've finished our work that we need to do here. It's been sent, all sent back to General Code. They'll start putting together the final ordinance that we'll approve to make all those changes we've discussed in a preliminary manner over the last several months. There were several work tasks that came out of that that I included in a, in a memo to, to department directors and, and the police chief. There's several tasks of, in Alex's purview that she'll be, she's been working on them slowly, which is part of the reason why we didn't do anything with the recodification. And then there's a few new things, like junkyards and fire lanes and a couple other things that'll go to the Planning Commission as pending work tasks, and Planning Commission will work on prioritizing those. I'm making recommendations of bringing those back to the board at some point in the future. Penn State's annual Moving On Concert has been announced for April 28th. They always are very considerate and send us a notice and ask for a little indulgence while they make noise for the students before they move on. And then we had some correspondence from the Airport Authority regarding Delta had suspended service to State College in June, I believe, as of June 5th. So there was some information from the Airport Authority on that. And then there was a follow-up article that went out, included yesterday, had to do with specifics about how airlines are making adjustments, mostly for regional markets and things like this. As you've heard, everybody's suffering from pilot, staff shortages, and so it's impacting, impacting Delta's ability to provide service here. My last quarterly housing stats report was included. There's nothing to be cheer about, but things, the, I think we're seeing a, a little bit of the end of people before, people starting projects, they probably had funded before interest rates go up. But I think we're going to see an uptick in multifamily housing. I can't, I forgot, I was going to make a note. I know, I think in the last couple of months, we've seen, while we've only had a few single-family housing starts in the last quarter, I think we did have like 10 townhomes that, that started construction. So I think, you know, out there at the end of Grey'swood Boulevard, you haven't been out there, I think you'll see continued construction on those townhomes. There's about 20, nah, maybe not that many, 15, 16 lots in toff trees. And there's still lots out there at the end of, for single-family homes out there at the end of Grey'swood Boulevard, too. So, so, you know, we're, we're hanging in there. Nothing great either way. Upcoming events, May 29th, office closed. Dan will be in PSATs here in a couple of weeks. Household Hazardous Waste Collection is April 28th, 29th. You need to pre-register if you have stuff that you need to take there. Primary election is May 16th, and bulk waste collection has been announced for May 22 to 26. And that's the end of my report.
Any questions?
Both Dan and I are going to.
Okay. Well, you have fun, too. Are you going, Alex, or?
No, I'm not going this year. I was asked to go back to Penn State.
You have problems, go find Alex and Brumbo, okay? From College Township, don't take care of it.
I don't know. I'm with Dan.
Where are you going?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're driving down together.
Mercy. Oh, okay. For PSATs?
Yeah, for PSATs.
Last time I went to it, it was actually one of the speakers there that was talking, I forget what weather topic it was, but it was interesting.
You can't, you don't remember?
I know, I know what it was. I just don't remember how long it was. Okay. We're up to Committee Reports.
I have a, well, not an update. I have something to say. We, tomorrow morning is the joint meeting of the Facilities Committee and the COG Finance Committee. So Doug, the facility, I guess you didn't get the note or something, because you said the Facilities Committee meeting was last week.
Oh.
They're actually, it's a joint meeting.
It's a joint meeting tomorrow.
Okay, no, I'm.
Anyway, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
The point is, the, they sent, COG prepared the draft Capital Improvement and Replacement Plan, 40 pages approximately. The one thing I wanted to bring to the attention of the committee, especially Elliot, since you're our representative to the Executive Committee, they, they have proposed a full bill for the Millbrook Marsh War War. In other words, instead of a phased construction over several years, they're proposing to build it all at once. The rationale is it'd be cheaper that way, do it all at once, instead of spreading it out in phases. But they are proposing a $7 million loan. I've already heard from other, one other, a couple of other supervisors at other townships, they're not in favor of, of funding the entire bill for that amount of money all at once. So there's going to be discussion, quite a bit of discussion tomorrow about it. And whatever the result of the discussion is, it's going to get forwarded to the Executive Committee. So I just wanted you to be aware that's coming up. And I want to give the supervisors a chance to tell me if you have any personal opinions about this whole thing, if you thought about it. And also Larry, like Larry's also on the committee, so if he has.
I, I also don't agree with borrowing and funding out of all of that. It also leaves out any chance of getting any kind of other funding when you just say, we're gonna, we're gonna borrow the money. That leaves out any incentive to go out and, and get, you know, contributions or grants. And I, I would prefer to do it in phases. I think $7 million is a, is a big knock for the municipalities to, to take. And at this point in time, I don't think it's a good time to borrow money. I think that the, you know, the, the rates are, are a lot higher. If we would have borrowed it two years ago when we got it at 1.2%, that, that's one thing. But now I think it's, it's going to be an expensive proposition to borrow money.
And for a marsh, it'd be a true sinking fund.
Yeah.
I agree with Larry. That's deep.
Well, that's my opinion as well. I just want to be sure that I didn't go against what the board's wishes on.
No, I think, I think you're right. And that sounds like a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but I don't see any reason to go forward that way.
I thought we had agreed on phases when we talked about it.
We probably did.
I don't think there was any agreement about that. There was, the discussion had to do with the alternatives. There were like five or three different alternatives, and then there was one, one recommended by the consulting group, and we took, we talked about that.
Yes. But I don't think the recommended one was to build it all at one time.
Yeah. I'm almost sure it was not. I think we were in.
And I think we ever talked about building it all at, at one big.
This is the first I've heard.
At no point were, were the elected officials asked whether they were able to do it in phases or not. There were been comments made in several committee meetings about, give us options.
Right.
But I think, you know, this is the point with, start with the CIP and the program plan. If you want it to be a phased approach, you're going to have to probably say that loud and often.
Okay.
All right. So that's what the message I take is.
Okay.
All right.
I'll do that. You know me.
On, the Lucy Committee did not meet when stated here. We're, it's a joint meeting that we're having with the planning people, and it's next month. It was requested that we wait till next month to do this. The land use and infrastructure meeting that didn't happen on April 6th.
And you attend Public Safety yesterday?
Yeah. Yesterday, I'll have a full report on the Public Safety Committee. But what we did talk about, Sean is the acting fire director, gave a report on the first quarter of 2023 fire incident status. He also gave a report on the Alpha Shift Hour report and the ESCI recommendations. Sean is also the Emergency Management Coordinator, who gave a report on current and upcoming events, which is the Blue White Weekend is this weekend for Penn State. There will be a carnival located next to the Beaver, Beaver Stadium, starting Friday evening, all day Saturday until 7:00 PM. And on Saturday evening, the game will be from 2:00 PM until 4:00. There will be a new operation facility for, at the University Support Building to give our EF, the EMS support. They are expecting a large turnout. So I'm letting everyone know, there will be traffic jams. So get ready. Let me see, that's the second event. They talked about a second event to preparation of the Memorial Day in Harris Township. The officials will be discussing mom's safety for the parade route. And I'll give our other report. I'll have it in our next meeting.
Okay. I have a question. Do they, did Sean talk about replacing the fire station bay door in State College Borough Fire Station?
No, he did not.
Well, he's going to bring it up tomorrow in the Facilities Committee and Privacy Committee. So I didn't know that. There's really no controversy about it, and it needs to be replaced, and they have the money for it. It's not, we're going to have to, the township's going to have to contribute at all to replace one of that door.
Oh, great.
Sounds like it opens the door to fast action, huh?
Yep.
And finally, the SPPA Working Group met this morning. We are, I'll have a. I'll have a better report for it for the next meeting, but the contracts with the retail and the solar developer, the retail provider and the solar developer have been reviewed by our solicitor that we hired for that, and and they're now back in the developer and they're back in the developers' solicitor lawyers' hands to to review our comments. So we're expected to have another meeting either at the end of April or the beginning of May, and then I'll be coming back with more information of where we stand.
Okay, and one other for our public safety, the Executive Director gave us a report that they are looking for the Fire Director recruitment, so that is coming up. Thank you.
Which brings us to the end of item 10. Is there any other business? Is there a move to adjourn? We are adjourned. Need secretaries and Mary Barisso.